They didn't come over to the house yesterday. I thought they would, but they didn't. He said he had yard work to do. I could have used your help. Well.
Hey, Randy.
This is Sam.
Good, how are you?
That's why you're so excited.
Yeah. Yep, sounds like a busy Monday.
X-rays told me that the cartilage was gone between the top and the inside. Then there's arthritis. Well, it's early.
Yep.
So, but I could still walk a couple of miles a day since I've been down here walking. Now, the last three or four days, I can't. So, that's why I called him today and said, "I need to give you some advice." He called back and says, "We're referring you to Dr. Don." So, he is the doctor who did me five years ago.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there he is. That's a pretty much.
It's like, nice to get to answer your questions.
Absolutely. In fact, if you don't call me tomorrow, I know his office, I mean, we got two of his offices. Mr. Deemer, thank God, I haven't seen you in a long time. And he, one of his nurses, Jim Teasdale, my kind of partner, detective lawyer, died. Five years ago, so. She's a nurse, I thought if I get ahold of her, maybe she could set that up really quickly.
There you go.
Yeah, it did. Well, it did, because I was off six more weeks from your. You have any cancellation?
Okay, good evening. Debbie, would you please give the invocation this evening?
Before I start, I'd like to read a short Psalm, Psalm 133. How wonderful and pleasant it is when brothers live together in harmony. For harmony is as precious as the anointing oil that was poured over Aaron's head that ran down his beard and onto the border of his robe. Harmony is as refreshing as the dew from Mount Hermon that falls on the mountains of Zion. And there the Lord has pronounced His blessing, even life everlasting. Our heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come before you today at this Freeport's City Council meeting. We thank you that in God we trust is above the door as we come into the meeting. And Lord, we ask that you bless each alderman that isn't here as well as all those who are present. Lord, we ask that you give Mayor Jody and each alderman great wisdom and understanding and common sense. Lord, may they work with all with one accord for the goodness of our community. And Lord, may personal agendas and whatever keep them from making poor choices. It's all for the good of the people. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Debbie. Now, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's Borneman.
Here.
Monroe.
Here.
Ross is absent. Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Shadle.
Here.
Mysick.
Here.
And Barr.
Here.
And if you could please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Barr.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare under the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the discipline of liberty and justice for all.
And the meeting is yours, Alderman Barr.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Well, good evening, everyone. And before we begin tonight on item number four, just want to make note that Agenda Item Number 12 will be moved to the May Committee of the Hall. So, for the Agenda Items that remain, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Still not.
Second?
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Alderman Parker, seconded by Borneman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Hall meeting held March 13th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Monroe, seconded by Busker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passed. Okay, item number seven, swearing-in ceremony by Mayor Miller. Chris Schenberger, interim police chief. Oh, I'm, I, look at me, I apologize.
You chair, your choice.
I know, I'm green. I apologize for that. We do have, we do have some public comments, one in fact, for the Agenda Item regarding something that's on the Agenda. Forrest Sen? After.
I'll wait until then. Is that all right?
Forrest Sen? For the Agenda Item? You're welcome to speak now.
I'll just speak on the Agenda Item.
He's presenting.
When it comes up.
Oh, okay. Says, okay. Okay, okay, sounds good, okay. So, public comments, those remaining will be at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. So, item number seven, swearing-in ceremony.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Chris, it is my honor and pleasure to be able to swear you in tonight. So, I'm going to let you take this with you. Sure. All right, so then raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Schenberger.
I, Chris Schenberger.
Having been appointed as the interim chief of police.
Having been appointed as the interim chief of police.
In the city of Freeport.
In the city of Freeport.
In the county of Stevenson.
In the county of Stevenson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my appointment.
Of my appointment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank the city manager, Mr. Bukis, for giving me this opportunity. And Chief Summers, someone who I worked closely with for 25 years of my career, for his support and his backing in believing in me. As well as, I see some past Freeport Police Officers and present, I thank them. They're some of the hardest working individuals I've been around. And especially some of the past guys have helped, I guess, cultivate me and shape me into the person I am today, so.
Okay. Okay, item number eight, Greater Freeport Partnership Quarterly Presentation to the Council by Mark Williams, Executive Director. Mr. Williams? Is there? Is this on?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Is there slides? I didn't know if they got slides to you. Ah, gotcha. Thank you. All right. There we go. All right. Thank you, good evening. And again, our first quarter of '23 report to you. I should have had some of this mailed to you in your, sent to you in your Agenda Packet as well as the presentation today. And for instance, our property rehab and development, economic development, we did have some, again, ribbon cuttings in the first quarter. Five-blow, Jane Case lawn, opening again in the Meadows. During the first quarter, commercial industrial development, two local manufacturers. Companies are developing sites, working with a developer, again, continuing to work with a developer, national retail chain, to find site solutions in Freeport. Facilitating local industrial company to relocate the First McNess Building. Currently working, again, with the Community Development Department on that to make sure the fit is there, that they're there with their investment, moving their company from a garage in Rock City to First McNess. The partnership helped facilitate the location decision on that. And advancing greenfield site development, MRC, Mill Race Crossing project advertised for bid. Finding decisions and solutions after the bid opening. Project makes Freeport-Stevenson County more attractive for new industrial development and expansions of existing companies, which you'll find later in a couple of the slides that we have. The amount of requests for sites has continued to increase in the state of Illinois. Business retention and expansion, met with 30 investors, partnership-level investors and employers for feedback in the status of their business. Hosted partnership-level education series on the housing study. This is the slide I was talking about, the numbers of projects that come in for requests for proposals for location. To the right of that is the project stages key. So, the one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven are the different stages as they come into the sales funnel. And so, many of these, if you don't have sites ready, they may stay there at two for a while, at least you're competitive. If they're at one, we didn't have the opportunity to meet with them. So, and then we try to move these projects along into seven, and that means having shovel-ready sites available. Property redevelopment rehab, again, same similar situation. When they opened up, different ones are industrial, residential, industrial misuse. So, these are the different types of sectors that we look at and work with. And then other activity in the enterprise zone, Q1. Again, there are six units of government in the enterprise zone that we administer, including Joe Davis County and Stevenson County as well. Business engagement, business events, rise and shine. We had three rise and shines at Quiet Souls, Salvation Army, and Freeport Public Library. Business after hours at Barker, FHN, and Big O's was canceled because of weather. Community Navigator, we are again, and the Community Navigator program was opened up. I think the portal came live on the 6th. And so, we are a navigator helping assist businesses that are interested in it. This venue is specific to hotels, restaurants, creative arts, and venues. And so, we will help answer questions, get them set up with the right application process. And our, our team at the Greater Freeport Partnership is working. With anybody's interested, we are doing outreach as well directly. We, so, and that's only open until May 10th. So, any, we are doing direct reach out to the companies and businesses as well and take any in-call and questions that they have. Stevenson County Home Show is April 15th, this Saturday. The partners, Greater Freeport Partnership is co-hosting that, along with Stevenson County Fair. At the fairgrounds, Saturday, first time held in several years. The Come Home Campaign for Workforce Development. All videos are completed and available on website, releases and promotion to begin April 15th. Career Fairs, continued meetings with FHS, careers and college advisors helped to host promote workforce connections job fair on March 30th. And we started our HR Roundtable this past quarter, committed to hosting five meetings this year with our HR executives to discuss all factors affecting employment, housing, education, training, childcare, employment benefits, et cetera, and any other discussions that they have. And it's also worked towards our workforce development as well. Visitors, and the idea is, again, to get more information, pull information from our employers and then try to align the educational institutions that push our workforce development talent into the pipeline. So, the alignment of that connection is what we're looking at really connecting. Visitor Center, many of you heard, visitor center closed for in-person traffic on Highway 20 on March 31st. Traffic has decreased to main attraction, really has up till late, it has been restrooms rather than local information and local products. People seek their information differently nowadays than they did in the past when they started the visitor center. Visitor's information kiosk will be in place in nearly a dozen locations throughout the city and county as well as broader digital reach and taking advantage of the AI, placer AI technology we have so it can do more information on the visitor so we can meet the visitor where they're at as well as, and trying to be more efficient in our financial situation. Mobile Visitor Service Kiosk traveled to several events in the quarter. Celebration dance competition, manual Lutheran tournament, HS Siemens basketball tournament. Marketing still waiting word on tourism grant for tourism spend for 2023 campaigns. Again, Nicole was able to go to the group tour conference and a success meeting of 51 tour operators to encourage stops in Freeport and Stevenson County and finished the 2023 Community Guide and awaiting delivery soon. In events, Arctic Ale and Art Walk was held February 25th with 23 participating businesses downtown, 350 attendees. If you had the opportunity to attend the Usual Suspects Concert, Suspects Concert we had on March 18th, thought it was a big success. We had a crowd of 422 attendees, and that was to raise money for our downtown placemaking beautification efforts. Great music, fundraised over $5,000 for downtown placemaking. Upcoming events, Stevens County Restaurant Week, April 21 through 30th, Pretzel Fest, April 22nd, and Pretzel City Wine Fest on May 20th. Design and placemaking, a big, big effort. And, you know, congratulations to Andrea Schultz-Winner, who's here. If I run out of time talking before I have to go to the county. But I think we'll have another presentation later next month, but on, on the strategic plan that came out of Main Street. But the transformation strategy sessions that we held, we had on March 15th to 16th, 38 attendees to five sessions. 417 survey responses also helped form feedback. And a big thank you to the city of Freeport and the mayor's newsletter that went out to help push participation in that survey. And beautification planning, working with Dinerger Floral for summer work and fundraising for planning and labor. Planning design created for Locust Avenue, Locust Avenue medians. Facade improvement, working with Community Development Department to deliver property owners for the April 14th grant deadline. And historic tour, which is working with Lindo Theater for future promotion. And if you have any questions, I'm open.
Counsel? I do have a question for you, sir. So, the Come Home Campaign, it, obviously, I, I think that's great. I think young people need to recognize what, you know, or people in general that have been here, you know, that this is a good place to come back to. Can you speak to how that's being measured? I mean, you know, with regards to videos and so forth and a campaign to get people to come back to the area, is there a measurement to see the success of that over time? Is there a deadline, that sort of thing?
I don't, when it's got, this got launched recently, I don't know, Andrea, would you have anything to add to that? Andrea and Nicole are really the ones pushing this project together for the Come Home Campaign.
Thank you.
So, as indicated, it'll get launched mid-April. And the idea is that we can identify via clicks, turnover. So, this would be the videos that are spotlighting Come Home candidates, people who have once lived here, moved away for whatever reason, and now they're back. It's highlighting their story, telling why they moved back, why they enjoy living in Freeport and Stevenson County. The idea, then, they're kind of an ambassador, and they're pushing that out via their own social media feed. We understand that the people who are most likely to move back here already have some familiarity with the area. And so, it's likely that these people already have a social network built that's going to, their friends and family members are going to see that information, that they're going to help spread. And then, we can measure clicks from social media posts that will then go back to our website. We can then, we have a way that they're going to fill out an online form or subscribe. And so, that will kind of help put them in a sales funnel. And with that, then we can then message to them directly, our event guide, anything that they're, that's going on, real estate listings. We can measure, and we can send those information directly to them, to their inbox. So, yeah, we will be tracking all that information.
Great, thank you. Alderman Monroe?
Thank you, sir. So, how many of these projects that you've listed here came directly to the Greater Freeport Partnership versus coming to the city initially?
For the, the ones that are on the, if I can go back to the, on this tab, on this tab?
Yes.
Yeah. The majority of these come to us through our relationships with brokers or Intersect Illinois. Majority of, and again, Intersect Illinois is the marketing arm of the state. And so, they, they are the private, public-private partnership group of the state's marketing arm. Not government entity, but public-private partnership. So, in that relationship, they come to us through that. There's a, there are, I'm sure that there are a couple here that, that do come to us through communication with the city. But the majority of them that you see in here, industrial and healthcare, are primarily coming through our marketing outreach.
Awesome. Follow-up, sir?
Yes.
Um, so, I've heard for many months now shovel-ready. And as I, like many other people, live in the city, we drive around town, we see empty buildings everywhere. What would it take, you know, tell us what's needed to really get shovel-ready for the size of opportunities we have here?
Shovel-ready, and some of these, again, some of them, you're looking at 100 million, some of them are 50 acres, 100 acres. Mega sites that the state just put out a grant for was 200 acres plus. But, you know, there's 80 acres available, 88 acres of Mill Race Crossing. That is owned by the county. That is the industrial development site that the city is also participating on, intergovernmental agreement to get infrastructure out there. But typically, those run anywhere between 20, you know, five acres can put up, you know, 40,000 square foot building to 100,000 square foot building. If you're going to get up to 700,000 square foot building or eight, or 100,000 square foot, or a million square foot building with distribution, that's about, I'd say, 40 acres to 100 acres. So, you know, depending on the size, but the majority of them can be around 10 acres, you know? But having functional, that's, that's ground-up vertical construction. If you have existing buildings that have space available, it needs to be functional space for the primary, you know, part of it. Some of the older structures that we have in town may be filled already with small rentals that are warehoused out. There is some available space out there that we keep working with the owners and the brokers of those buildings and getting that information out. But the functionality of these buildings really are obsolete for the most part. And so, we need to have buildings that are more functional and meet the demands for the investor. And again, it's the, it's the private sector that's making the investment in locating their business here. And it's the public sector's partnership in making the infrastructure available in partnership with them. And that includes water, sewer, land, or road, infrastructure, and the remaining. So, I, we just, I mean, in the entire region, there's not a lot of shovel-ready sites of that size that I just mentioned earlier. We have sites that really don't have access to sewer and water for the most part or have an existing structure on it that is not functional. For industrial, right, development. Commercial's a different story. And so is residential, upper story. We do have a lot of old bones in town, in Freeport, that, that could go through a high level of redevelopment processes. But it's going to take some good-sized capital stacking on some of the larger structures that you have to make it work because they won't necessarily get the rents that they have to, on the return, to pay for their investment because the cost of redevelopment and construction right now is high. And so, those are, those are the issues they're facing. So, you're filling the gap, really, is what we look at, at being competitive, is being able to fill the gap and also the speed to market and having sites available and ready is what's critical.
Yeah, it just, it seems painfully obvious that other areas around the region are not having the same problem. You cross the border into Wisconsin, you go to Dubuque, you know, lots of development, lots of building going on. And I was just wondering if, you know, we had a plan or an idea about pushing forward. And I guess my last question, has the state offered any assistance, either through our state representatives or state senator, you know, as far as funding to help build out these types of infrastructure that we need?
Well, I mean, there's, there's funding there that came through ARPA. So, there's funding for water and sewer infrastructure. Again, I can't speak on behalf of the state representatives on bringing money to the table. But the state of Illinois has grant programs, like I talked about, for the mega sites. But if we had a project ready to go and somebody was ready to go with it, I'm sure there's programs at the state that we could work with. You have most of the tools that any other community has here, Enterprise Zone, TIFs. There's not too many tools that, that we have that, let's say, Rockford has, or even Belvidere for the most part, and Rochelle. It's all the same tools. It may not have the infrastructure for transportation that they may have. But you have, you know, there's a geographic constraint on your competitiveness when it deals with different industries. But you do have some rail sites, you do, are close with agricultural, value-added ag companies, food. So, those are targeted areas that we look at.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number nine, Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, presented by Mayor Miller.
Well, it is my pleasure to be able to read the following proclamation. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Freeport Emergency Communications Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activity by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their jobs in this past year. Now, therefore, I, Jody Miller, do hereby declare that April 10th through the 14th, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Freeport, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and our citizens safe. So, thank you to each one of those. And Chief, if you can pass this on, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, Quarterly Status Report on City's Goals Established by Social Justice Committee, presented by Manager Bukis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Social Justice Committee recommends a number of metrics to be measured to see how the city is progressing towards diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city government. With respect to hiring, the first quarter of 2023, we continue to recruit for open positions in all departments. The library is now fully staffed after having as many as three vacancies at one time. The police department is still down 10 officers and three dispatchers. The fire department will fill their three positions in April. Also, in the water and sewer department, we've had a number of vacancies that we're trying to fill as well. In the police department, the female workforce accounts for 34.5% of the department's employees, and the minority workforce accounts for 10.5%. Both numbers are down slightly from the 2022 fourth quarter. In the fire department, we saw no changes in female and minority employment from last quarter. Our goal in both departments is to try and increase female minority employment by the 5%, by the end of the year. We have used various outreach techniques and resources to recruit applicants for these positions, including community leaders, clergy, TV ads, radio ads, and ads in minority publications, professional associations, et cetera. We also are using targeted Facebook ads. With respect to other departments, the number of female employees increased by four from the fourth quarter. Overall, female employees and non-police. Overall, female employees in non-police and fire departments make up 39.5% of the workforce. Non-public employees, non-public safety minority workforce is 8.6%. Female employees, overall, female employees make up 30.4% of our workforce. And minority employees make up 7.2% of our workforce. We did not conduct any staff on the streets this past quarter. Our goal for nuisance and building inspections was to increase them by 5% from the previous year. Since we did so well last year, we are increasing the goal to around 9%. Our goal, our new base now is 6,100 inspections. We had, we have planned to conduct 1,525 inspections this quarter. We performed 1,462. This is an increase of 363 inspections over the same period last year. The first quarter, we had a total of two buildings demolished. One was an accessory building and one was a regular building. Our goal is to do 30 buildings this year. Although we had several changes in our boards and commissions, the female minority membership on our committees did not change from the fourth quarter 2022, and both are slightly down from the first quarter of 2022. And entertaining any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions, council? Okay, thank you. Item number 11, discussion allowing access for UTVs to downtown business, presented by Forrest Sen, Land of Lincoln, UTV Association member.
Good evening. I'm Forrest Sen. I just wanted to come tonight and kind of address the council. There's a group of us here in Freeport-Stevenson County that operate UTVs. We are in the process of trying to open the county and open northern Illinois up to the use of UTVs on the roadways. We're, we're members of the Land of Lincoln UTV Association. And we are also working at a state level with the House of Representatives and the Senate. We have House Bill 2942 and Senate Bill 1918, right now before them trying to get the roadways in the state of Illinois open. So we are trying to build the economy and trying to get access to the downtown for UTVs. We're working on a route basically from Orangeville down to Freeport. And we are also trying to get the rest of the county open. This all would hinge on the county cooperating. But before we get to that point, we would really like to have a destination in Freeport for people to be able to come downtown, load, unload, get to restaurants, businesses, shop, try to tap into some of that money that's all going to Wisconsin. So that's our goal, is to try and boost the economic development in the downtown and try and tap into some of these funds for our businesses and try and connect with the trails in Wisconsin. Just so you understand, we are looking at UTVs and not ATVs and unlicensed dirt bikes. And if you're unfamiliar of the term of a UTV, it is a vehicle that is driven, has safety belts, headlights, turn signals, brake lights, horns, all the safety vehicle stuff that most that a car would have. Most of these vehicles are probably just as expensive as automobiles. They're all insured and they would be registered. Our goal is to register them at a county level. So that would be required for them to be able to be on the roadways and get to Freeport. But I've driven, I've drawn, we've drawn up a few maps of two possible entries in a Freeport. The north route being on Henderson Road and coming into Stevenson and going into the downtown and possibly getting to maybe Tuddy's Crossing or some of the parking lots on Spring Street. We're not expecting all of downtown to be open. And we expect these routes would be marked. That is something we could assist with the cost of the signs, just to get this moving so we can try and get this going through. We just wanted to bring it and kind of open a discussion and see if it was something that would be feasible. Because we want a destination before we work on getting with the county.
Thank you. Questions?
Any question?
I do.
Mayor Miller?
Yeah, Forrest, nice presentation. And I would have to say, most people are always wanting to have more economic development. So it's just trying to figure out what that all looks like. Kind of seems in my mind that the city might be on the last leg of that instead of the first leg. So you've got a lot of homework to do on that. And just one thing that I want to highlight, you've got all of Stevenson in that, in that orange. And Stevenson is considered IDOT. And according to IDOT rules, you can't travel on IDOT, but you can cross it. So somehow you're going to have to figure that out or have a lot of favor at IDOT that most people wouldn't have.
Well, those are just suggestions. Our other option may be to try and come across the Jane Addams Trail Bridge into Tuddy's Crossing, or that parking lot at Tuddy Bigger Park. I don't know if that's possible, but that's our other.
So you're saying, you're talking like just completely staying off of Stevenson and just going like Henderson to, to the, to the path?
Correct.
And then how do you plan on doing that with coming in from the south?
We would, we could also cross at Hancock and go back into like Park Street or one of those over to Henderson.
Okay. If you can pass that with IDOT?
We can, we can cross, and the major issue with IDOT is, is the speed limits. So like I said, right now we have a House Bill and a Senate Bill before them. We're trying to get it open statewide. If the, if that would happen, that would solve a lot of our problems. But there are other cities and counties that do this. And there are so many groups that are doing this. Lena is open, and there's a lot of groups that travel from Lena up to Wisconsin. They go from Lena to Pearl City. They go from Pearl City down to Lauren, Mount Carroll. So we're just trying to get this all legal and get a revenue stream for the county and the citizens here to help fund it.
Mr. Busker?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sen. I've actually done some ATVing up in Wisconsin and, you know, they've got it figured out up there. You can spend a lot of money on a weekend ATVing up there. So if we can, you know, get, tap into some of that, that would be great. You know, looking at the map here, I only see here, there'd only be one source for, to fuel these vehicles within these routes. You know, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to see something a little more expansive if we're going to do something here. But the other, a couple other things I had is, would, would that be pre-registration? Or if somebody was coming to the destination, I know up in Wisconsin, if you're out of state, you know, you go to one of the trailheads or a gas station in town, you can buy the sticker for, the out-of-state sticker for like, you know, a $10 premium on top of in-state. Would that be similar?
What we would want is everybody in the county to be registered with the county. And that's our goal, is to open the county, have the registration through them. And then anybody operating in here in the county would need that county sticker.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense. I'm just, I'm just wondering about the logistics of getting that sticker. Would it be something that you could grab on a weekend or is it something you have to get ahead of time from the courthouse? I don't know.
I think that's possible, that we could have them at gas stations. I know you can get them at the QuickTrip in Monroe for, you know, their trails. So I don't know why that would be any different. And you talk about the limited access of gas stations. This was just kind of a basic map. We were just throwing ideas around. I had met it with Chief Summers, and I was trying to keep it basic. So, you know, that's obviously up to the council and up to the city on how you want to move forward and what you would approve. This is just kind of an idea, some suggestions to get it going. And see if it would, something that we could get through.
Alderman, Boardman?
Thanks. Appreciate your presentation and the intent behind your, your plan here. Couple questions, I guess from the positives, you've highlighted a bunch of them. I'm bringing up some of the things that would concern me is, I think, you know, I would be hesitant to try to bring in more slow-moving vehicles onto our roadways. So I am not familiar with UTVs. What's, are they capable of traveling 30 miles an hour?
Yes.
And is that, is that like an excessive, you gotta be flooring it to get it to 30, or that's common?
Mine will do 60.
Okay. Then just, I have some follow-up questions.
Absolutely, yes.
So when we're coming from, onto the roads, you know, one of the things is, is this going to make the roadways filthy with mud and dirt? Because I'm assuming we're coming off of trails onto our roadways and there's a, assuming there's not just one, it's usually groups of you guys going back and forth. So what are your experiences with that and how have other communities dealt with that issue?
All of our routes downhill would basically be on the roads, back roads, not highways. So I don't think the mud would be an issue. I don't see us getting on the Jane Addams Trail in anytime soon.
Okay. And then from the police department's perspective, I mean, this is another thing for the department to have to worry about enforcement-wise. I mean, I know, Schenberger, this is your first evening. And maybe it's just a thought to think about, or a discussion to have if this moves forward. But what is the police department's thought on having to deal with a, a new vehicle to enforce that otherwise we just wouldn't have that problem to deal with?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely something we're going to have to really sit down and talk about. Do you have more to add?
If you don't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I did have this discussion with, with Forrest. My major concern is that there'd have to be some sort of education program between the difference between a UTV and an ATV. Where you have a certain population here that enjoys running from the police on their ATVs that won't stop and creates dangerous situations. So there'd have to be a, a serious educational aspect of, of this. And serious enforcement of the, those people with the UTVs that are operating outside of the traffic laws and things like that. That's, that's the major concern. And one of the routes that comes into town is a, goes, goes past a place where these ATVs are always running on the roadways, causing problems.
Okay. And then my last question, you've mentioned Wisconsin. Is it municipality-by-municipality thing up there, or is it a state law that allows these?
In Wisconsin, it's statewide.
So the, the state law allows for UTVs to just travel on roadways?
Yes, but there's, there's only certain roadways that you can travel on. And that's all adopted by the cities and the counties. That's like, up until last year, Monroe was only certain designated routes you could travel on. And then starting last year, they opened up the whole city of Monroe. The only roads that we can't be on in Monroe is like 1181 and the town square. The rest of Monroe all opened because they were, you know, they weren't having any issues. They, they're not having trouble with them, so they opened up all the roads up there except, like I said, the main roads and the town square downtown.
Thank you.
Alderman Monroe?
I'll, I'll add a little piece here, you know, ridden, driven, UTVs myself. In Wisconsin, the last year, they spent about $2.5 million on trails, signage around the state. They brought in over 18.5 million in revenue. So that money is, is spent, and that's just counting the licensing, you know, the gas, things like that, taxes that they bring in revenue-wise on that. But that doesn't count hotels and food and everything else. So, you know, there, there are some positives to connecting up with Wisconsin. The same thing as we've done with the bicycles here in Freeport. I agree with the chief, there are a few, but there's always a couple of knuckleheads in the crowd that want to run from the police or do crazy things. But I think the majority of people around here are pretty well-behaved and like to follow the law.
Alderman Parker?
Yes, I just personally took a 150-mile trip last year with this group in Wisconsin. I was a passenger, had a great time. We traveled a lot of roads. And you know what? There wasn't one time I seen anything that showed any danger for anybody. And they're, the, both the UTV drivers and the vehicles were all respective of each other. They had big signs where you weren't allowed, and it's really well-sought out up there, and it's a huge moneymaker. And I'll be honest, I had a great time in that 150 miles, so thank you.
Any other questions?
So I too would like to comment. I, I see a lot in Wisconsin. They have a lot of fun and they spend a lot of money. So I appreciate you bringing something to, being creative on ways to bring money into the community. I think that's great. I just have a simple question, because I don't know much about them. Is the liability insurance similar to a vehicle? Do you have, is it mandatory X amount of liability insurance?
Pretty much everybody that's got these, that they're on the road, in Wisconsin, it is required, yes. You have to have, I have full coverage online.
Sure.
And you have to have liability insurance.
Okay, okay.
Just like a car.
Thank you.
And that would be one of the requirements to get the registration here in our county. You would have to have licensed and insured.
Absolutely, okay. Any other questions? Okay, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item 13, presentation and discussion on necessary wastewater treatment plant upgrades, presented by Director Boyer.
Thank you very much. So we're here tonight to discuss upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant that have been, we've been working on since before 2017. There's about, there's five sections. If I've got a question and answer opportunity in between each section. So as we kind of move through the presentation, jot your questions down for each section, and then we'll have a pause to ask them. There's quite a bit of material here, so feel free to ask them. But bearing in mind, I, I want to make sure that we're being efficient with your time. So the presentation's going to start with facility history, which is fairly lengthy. Current condition and project need. Project scope, phase one, and I just wanted to identify phase one of a multiple-phased approach. This is the first phase. Financial impact and potential deferred action impacts. So that is, for whatever reason, if we are unable to move forward in rapid manner, what, what kind of impacts there might be. And then a final summary. So at the very end, we'll hit a lot of those bullet points fairly succinctly. And then we'll take a final questions. This is the general layout of the current wastewater facility. You'll see Hancock Avenue right along the south end of the plant. And then to the north, you see there's the solar panel array there, and to the east, there's a solar panel array. This is the headworks. This is one of the areas that we're talking about primarily. Then we've got a maintenance garage here. Kind of see that. Primary clarifiers. This is not part of the project, but it kind of impacts where we go with, with our updates. The lab administration building, their aeration basins and blower building. And then secondary clarifiers, digestors, sludge handling, and the biologically aerated filtration system. clarifiers, digesters, sludge handling, and the biologically aerated filtration system. Additionally, there's the chlorine contact tank and the river lift station, which comes into play during high water, high water levels. So, the original plant was built in 1938, 1939. It included a pump station and primary treatment and digestion only. Then in 1968, the utility did another echelon of upgrades, including pump station, grit removal, the administration building. And as you can see here, this is the grit removal. This is the admin and lab building. And it also included secondary clarifiers, sludge beds, and aeration. This is the aeration. This is the clarifiers. In 1980's, sludge belt, gravity, gravity feed belt press was installed to deal with the sludge handling. And then a building, you might have seen that red barn, that's actually a, a sludge storage area. And there's some of the sludge. In 2000, the plant went through another upgrade. This was for ammonia removal and nitrogen removal. So, as you can see here, this is some of the, some of that. This is the first treatment upgrade to the water plant since 1968, and that happened 23 years ago. Additionally, to the BAF system, there were some additional offices and drafting room put in. So, just a quick review. It was built in 1938, 1939. It went through major improvements in 68. 1980, we added the, the sludge handling. In 1992, we did some minor improvements. And then in 2000, we added the, the BAF building. So, essentially what I mentioned before, there hasn't been any major upgrades to the plant since 2000. So, that completes the section on the, the facility history. Do you have any questions on that at this point? Okay, seeing none, move forward. So, the current condition and project needs. Right now, we've got the existing headworks. As you can see in some of these images, we've got primary waste that's leaking through cracks in the concrete, ending up in the hallways and the access tunnels. And this one here is down in the high server, the main lift pump room. Here's a picture of one of the cracks in the walls where the, where some of the untreated wastewater is, is seeping in. We've also got a lot of rust and things you would imagine in, in a facility this old. And then again, this is looking down one of the manways. And again, there's, there's additional issues there. This is looking down on the main headworks. These are the primary pumps that pump the, the wastewater through the system. As you can see, a lot of the valves, there's standing water on the floor all the time in the, in the sump area. There is quite a bit of rust and deferred maintenance in, in areas. As you can see there, there's some primary effluent seeping past that pipe, leaking down the wall. And generally, it's over 40 years old. It's seen its wear and tear. And then, this is a stairwell leading from the admin building down to the, down to the treatment works and the mechanical rooms. So, we've also got inadequate solid screening. We have antiquated, this is called a bar screen. And it, however functioning, it is allowing a lot of the non-digestible items to make its way through the treatment process, which damages pumps and plugs other equipment. And then the grit removal. However it functions, it does not remove enough of the grit. And again, that wears on the pumps and pipes and all the infrastructure down the, the Currently, we don't have sufficient capacity to handle our storm flows. We have a maximum capacity of 16.6 million gallons per day. And that concludes the existing headworks summary. We also need to update the laboratory and admin building. So, the lab is not up to EPA regulations for testing, for testing facility. It's very crowded, as you can see, with little room for much, much of anything. The facility is not ADA compliant. Our fume hood has, is not up to code. It doesn't meet the modern standards. And lab, the lab equipment is outdated. We've got inadequate storage. As you can see, here's an example of, of one of the cabinets. The doors are rusted and it's been there since 1968 in a corrosive environment. There is no built-in fire suppression, which is a concern. And there is the presence of asbestos in various locations in, in the lab and administration building. And we are completely out of space in there. in order for us to meet our new national pollution discharge elimination permit, we're not able to do so. We recently renewed that in 2020. The maximum, as I mentioned before, is 16.6 million. So, anything, any rain event that creates additional flow gets pumped directly out of the manholes and into the river. Our screening, as I mentioned before, does not do a very adequate job of removing the solids and the, the, the non-biological items that make it through the system, causing things to plug up different places in the plant and wear and tear in the equipment. And currently, we're not able to meet certain local limits in the dechlorination process. So, at the end of the treatment process, what you would do is you add chlorine and then you dechlorinate. That creates chlorine byproducts in the form of H85s and trimethylhalide that is an impact to receiving streams, specifically aquatic life. And we're looking, and we're not able to meet the projected phosphorus requirements in our new NPDS permit without renovation. And lastly here, the lab isn't, isn't up to EPA standards. So, we've outlined kind of the need. What are the solutions? Well, we need to increase the capacity of the headworks. So, we need to have greater than 16.6 million gallons per day of screening and pumping. Also, the, during those large storm events, we need a place for that, that river or the untreated inflow from the collection system to go. The, the solution for this is the addition of a SEP system or a chemically-enhanced primary treatment. Also, we have an issue with inadequate screening. So, the solution to that is to increase their screening capacity with six-millimeter fine screens that are capable of 25 million gallons per day each. And then, due to the local limits not being able to meet, be met, we need to update the treatment capacity and process train. So, increase the lab testing ability and pre-treatment guidelines. As I mentioned, the dechlorination process, we need to eliminate chlorination and dechlorination so that we're not generating those halocetic acids and trimethylhalides. So, construction of an open-channel UV disinfection structure to replace the existing chlorine dechlorination process is needed. Lastly, I believe it's lastly, we've got upcoming phosphorus limit changes and everybody's seeing these things coming along. They're gonna go from one milligram per liter to .5 to .1. We have no way to do that without chemical treatment. And this, this upgrade would include a ferric chloride treatment process that would cause those, that phosphorus to precipitate out in the treatment process and be deslged out. And then, as I mentioned before, the lab and equipment is inadequate. So, in addition to all this, this particular project is gonna involve electrical system upgrades. We need upgrades to the HVAC system in the lab right now. The, the air conditioning is not able to keep up with the condensation. So, we end up with condensation forming on the various beakers and, you know, elements that we're running in there. Today's technology allows us an opportunity to update our SCADA system or supervisory control and data acquisition system. And this allows us better control through a computer We would also be able to upgrade our alarm monitoring at various points in the treatment process. That would enable us to have better treatment. Air quality, similar situation, as I mentioned before, with the HVAC system. We have a lot of humidity and it impacts our lab. Not having fire suppression, we'd be able to add the fire suppression in and then increase OSHA safety standards. If you go through the plant, you'll notice most of the places in the plant built before, back in the 60's, there's a lot of new technology out there that keeps workers safe in the day-to-day. We'd be able to incorporate those new safety standards. Currently, the, the plant is not ADA accessible and does not meet any Americans with Disabilities access regulations. So, we would, everything would be brought up to standard with, regarding that. And then, overall, it would reduce the cost of O and M. It would keep things under control and we would have a lot less downtime and emergency responses and so forth. And it's also the sustainable path with environmental responsibility and stream management. We would be putting less of the trimethylhalides in the chlorine disinfection byproducts in that affect aquatic life. That covers some of the ancillary improvements. Moving forward, we've just dealt with the order-on-consent from the EPA. The city was required to update the local limits, industrial permitting, and start enforcement on violations. That affected most of our SIUs, but some of our IU's as well. That's significant industrial contributors. That led to the grease, one of the, one of the measures that we took on recently was a grease trap ordinance that required us for, required the commercial establishments to put in these grease traps so that it's not impacting our treatment downstream, downstream at the wastewater treatment plant. We also put together the MS4. That's the stormwater permit. Back in 2020, the city became one of the communities that then is now affected by MS4. So, that's been implemented. One of the main things is the water treatment plant creates excursions through, as I mentioned before, large rain events cause problems with the plant. It overwhelms the plant. Since August 2022, we've had, we've entered bypass mode two times, sending untreated effluent to the river. Approximately 20, 28 million gallons was sent in both of those storm events. So, excursions also require EPA documentation, explanation as to how, you know, how we're going to intend to fix it in the future. As I mentioned before, significant industrial users, enforcement, compliance, we've been doing that. Updating the discharge permits, performing the studies, doing the research for all the categorizing of the various contributors to the waste stream. Also increasing or, or modifying the local limits. The last time it was done was 1996. We've recently updated that. And then, from here on out, it's gotta be every five years. But it did take quite a while to collect all the data necessary to update those local limits. In addition to the local limit study, we had the order-on-consent quarterly reports that we had to file, annual inspections of permitted local users. We also had, developed the categorical determinization process. And enforcement tracking system was put together to monitor various contributors and their ability and their, their track record in terms of tracking or as far as compliance with the wastewater treatment local limits. In addition, conducting, conduct, we are conducting annual local limits surveys. So, we've been sending those out to get, to identify which people are significant contributors and who aren't, and then performing those inspections. So, at, just to sum it up, Freeport is the wastewater authority and is responsible for all discharge contributors to the community and including enforcement. We do have some future regulations that we're anticipating. We're expecting the EPA is gonna get a little strict with ammonia removal, phosphorus removal and discharge limits. That's coming up here. That's actually in our current NPDS permit. So, we are going to need to do improvements to the plant to comply with that. One thing that's coming up is the perfluorinated compound issue. We've been talking about it in the drinking water side. It's coming to the wastewater side. So, they'll be expecting us to remove the perfluorinated compounds before it goes out to the receiving streams. Also, sludge spreading and disposal restrictions. We'll be doing more tracking of that in the future. And all this sophisticated removal equipment requires operators that know what they're doing. So, there'll be additional demands on our ability to educate and maintain our Anyway, amplified lab testing lower limits. Essentially, what that means is we're gonna be required to meet certain requirements in the lab to do our own lab testing. And then additional impairment. They're continuing to track the peck in the rock for additional So, those are some anticipated regulations we expect coming down the road. I, I know that was quite a bit all at once. At this point, do you have any questions on this section?
Alderman Shadle.
I've got several for you. I haven't seen, I don't think anybody's seen any blueprints for this. The leaks in the concrete and the interior of this, are we changing significantly the footprint of this building? Because we're obviously gonna have to stay in operation while we're constructing new.
Yes, we're gonna be hitting that next.
Okay. The 16.6 million gallons per day, what are you projecting that we need to go up to on that or is?
I, I would say we, the 16 points, that we're gonna increase the total treatment capacity, but for rain events, the purpose of putting in the SEP system, and we'll get into that in a little bit, is to receive anything over and above what, what our new capacity is. And then have a place to put it, treat it, let it settle, desludge it, and chlorinate it.
And the dechlorination prior to discharge back into the river, that's something that is mandated by the ILPA also?
Yes, yes.
Not something we have any kind of choice about?
No, we have to dechlorinate before it goes in the river. However, the new plant design will remove chlorine. So, we'll, we'll no longer do chlorination except for the SEP system, which we'll use occasionally. We'll be doing UV treatment. So, that'll...
Thank you. You also mentioned that ammonia removal would be something they're looking at in the future. Are we dealing with that as well now as part of this?
It, it is not specifically addressed in this plant upgrade, no. But it's something we will be looking at moving forward. It may be a modification to the BAF system.
But it's something we're taking into consideration that we would have
Absolutely.
space if you need it for that.
Yes, and that is a challenge.
Thank you.
Alderman Monroe.
Yes, Director Boyer. So, has any thought gone into possibly moving this facility somewhere else? Because, you know, I, I'm sure the fire chief has kept awake at night knowing the chemicals that are there with the trains moving within how many feet of those buildings. You know, we've had a lot of train accidents in the last six months. And, you know, I, knowing a bit about some of those chemicals down there, I mean, have we thought maybe moving it would be a good idea or?
I suppose we could move it. However, all the interceptors run to that location. So, we wouldn't just move the plant. We'd have to move, at least duplicate the capacity to move the waste stream to a new location. When you're talking about flows in a, you know, around 20 million gallons a day, that's quite a bit. So, but
Thank you.
Point taken. Okay. All right. If that's all, I'm gonna move on to the next section. So, this is the discussion about the scope of the project. So, the first scope is the existing headworks. We will demolish the existing headworks, provide, you know, the screen and pumps and make modifications where necessary. Existing grit tanks will be demolished. The chlorine contact tanks will also be demolished. And the new headworks building will include the mechanical, or the screen, the new screens, the six-millimeter screens, grit removal equipment, and the main influent pumps. In addition, we'll be adding the chemically-enhanced primary treatment system. That's the SEP system, if you hear me referring to it later. That's gonna include a rapid mix, floculation, and sedimentation. In addition to that, it'll have chemical pumping and bulk storage tanks for the, the chemicals. We'll, we'll also be adding new UV disinfection. We'll also be adding new UV disinfection. New lab building and administration building. And then demolition of the existing maintenance building. And then also the chemical storage building. We'll get into some of these details. So anyway, here's the existing screen and screening shed right there. That's, that's part of what's going to be taken out. This is it right here. It has a fairly large bar screen in there and it'll be, that'll be one of the parts that's demolished. In addition, the existing pumps. This is down in the pump room in headworks. This will all be taken out. We'll also be abandoning some of the lower effluent channels. This maintenance garage right here, we'll have to go to make room for the new SEP system. And then the chlorine contact is here and that would also be demolished and removed. And then, let's see, we've got the chlorine storage building. So I, not really easy to see there, but, but it will be removed as well. So I think I skipped one there. Existing equipment in the, the grit channels will also be demolished and electrical systems will, will be replacing all of those. This is kind of hard to see on the projector, but if you, no, I'll just go to the next slide. I guess I missed that one. So this is where the maintenance garage used to be. So that'll be the SEP system, the chemically enhanced primary treatment. Then in this area where we had the bar screen, that, this will be our new primary treatment headworks right here. And then the admin building would be in front of the existing admin building, which is not showing up real good, but it's here. Then existing chlorine storage building is here. We would be replacing that with this UV, UV facility here. There we go. So that's just a quick slide on that. Okay, so on the proposed headworks, this is roughly where the location of the proposed headworks is going to go in this parking lot. That would include two fine screens. So it's got to be screened before it makes it to the pump station. So this is the, the cutaway view of the new headworks facility. This area is the screening room. Then we'd be putting in four raw sewage pumps capable of a combined flow of 25 million gallons a day. So again, there's the, the pump room is down here in the bottom in relation to there's the screening room we just talked about. And then we'll be adding quite a bit of grit removal to this project. Two grit tanks, three grit pumps, two grit classifiers, and then some built in redundancy. And that's in this back section of the headworks building. This is from the other side of the building. There'll be some overhead doors and access for maintenance and whatnot. So your main inflow would come in here right in front of the screen area. And then the raw sewage pumping chamber would be here. And then we'd have some inlets go into the SEP system. So once we get into really heavy flows, we bypass to the SEP system. One of the unique issues with the building site is the quality of the ground. So each of the structures requires a lot of columns to make it stable and make it long lasting. Again, we're kind of looking from that direction with the cutaway view. And then again with the walls back in, this is looking to the south. Okay, kind of hit all the points on this. Move into the next section here. I'm sorry, the headworks challenges. So as I mentioned, soil conditions. All the structures require pilings because the loamy soil in the area creates a complexity for the, to make sure that everything's stable enough for the heavy structures we're putting on it. So this, this particular, the headworks will be 45 feet deep. It's going to require a lot of dewatering throughout the entire construction process. So from the minute they start digging, they're going to be getting water coming in. And we've got to get that water out so they get their work done safely. And also the increased size of the equipment to compensate for the elevation change from the current headworks. So as I mentioned, we got some constraints here. Proximity to the river, the soil types. We've also got quite a few solar panels in the area. And we've also got some building constraints. All these, this facility has to be class one, division one, high hazard, which means we've got to put a lot of thought into the way it's laid out and built. Okay, that's a, there's a lot there. Does anybody have any questions on the headworks, even though, any thoughts on that?
Alderman Shadle?
That made a lot of clarification on my questions from earlier. Thank you. And the 45 foot depth of that, is that because of the depth of the inlets coming in?
Yes, that's the depth of the interceptor coming in there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the proposed chemically enhanced primary treatment. That would go right there where we have pipe storage and then that garage will have to be removed. So it's going to include a rapid mix, floculation, settling tanks, all influent greater than the design flow of the plant's going to end up going to the SEP system. This is a breakdown of that. It's a, it's kind of a basic treatment all by itself. You've got the chemical building there. You've got a mixing tank in this area and then a floculation tank to allow the chemical to work and have the solid settle out. The chemical injection will basically be, will have to inject chlorine to it because of the additional flow. We can't, we won't have the capacity to cover all of it with UV, but it'll still make it through the UV channel on its way to the river. Also tipping buckets, this will allow some of the, the solids and whatnot to end up going back to the head of the plant to get treated properly. And then the bulk storage tanks for the ferric chloride. This is, ferric chloride is what we use for coagulation. So that's what you enter into the water. It causes the, the flock to combine and get heavy and drop out. Yeah, this is kind of two different views. So this is the back view showing the chemical tanks, the chemical injection building. And then we flip it around and we're looking south again here. And it kind of gives you an earlier layout. Any questions on the SEP system? I know that's quite a bit all at once, but any questions on that? So the whole point of this is to absorb the, the storm flows that we get and so we don't have to bypass pump to the river before it goes through treatment. That's, that's the purpose of this system.
If I could, real quick on that, just to elaborate on that, is that something that the IELEPA is pushing for as well?
It's actually a creative way of gaining the necessary capacity to safely discharge to the river without upsizing the entire plant to 25 million gallons per day. So it's, it, it's a clever way of going about getting what we need done for the most efficient use of the funds.
But that, that discharge that we did in the last couple of years is something that we could get fined for if we continue without making some kind of improvements to avoid that in the future.
Absolutely. We're, we're fulfilling all our paperwork, but we are now the number one priority in the state of Illinois to get done with upgrade. Right now, they're letting us do what we need to do while we get this underway. That won't last forever.
Thank you.
Also some of the challenges. Yeah, this is getting back to kind of our overflows. Soil conditions and structures, again, back to the loamy earth that is very, doesn't want to carry a lot of weight and requires a lot of pilings to carry that weight. The structure is very deep. And again, back to the, the proximity of the river is going to create a lot of dewatering issues there. And then the site constraints. A lot of these are somewhat repetitive, but because we're between the, the PEC river, the solar panels and a, and a functioning wastewater treatment plant, there's a lot of proximity issues. This all eventually drives costs. So limited space for upgrades and required demolitions and maintenance. We're going to have to be very careful as we go through here. Okay, moving on, we'll talk about the UV treatment. This one will go pretty quick. This is the location of the proposed UV treatment building. We use ultraviolet to accomplish the same things you would with chlorine, except we don't have the same issues with the chlorine, chlorine by pa, byproducts that damage aquatic life. So this would replace the existing chlorine detention, de-chlorination process and also eliminates the need for dangerous corrosive chemical storage and so forth. So this is a, a rendering of the, of the building, what it will look like. You've got your electrical work in there. We've got some mechanicals in there and some UV channels. So the water will flow through this channel and get contact with the UV light to, to kill off any of the bacteria. We've got a, a covering here, kind of shading the area so we don't have any biological growth. Then back to the structural pilings because of the soil, soil conditions. It's also equipped with a non-podable water pumping system. So once we treat the wastewater, some of that wastewater, well, some of that cleaned water is going to get pumped back to the head of the plant to wash down the, the screen, the, the screens. That's, that's a good use of that, of that water. It's something we're not going to use freshwater to do. We could just recirculate some of our, our treated wastewater to take care of that. Again, different view, same location. Again, electrical room, mechanical room. And then this one shows the F, the outfall to the river. Okay, again, I just mentioned this, but the volume of, so one of the issues here with, we had to upgrade this from the original design. So the volume of flow was too, too much for our original plan. That's causing some increases there that we didn't account for in the original wastewater treatment plant design. Also again, back to the soil conditions and the pilings. And then site proximity, again, we're back to, up against the solar panels and the river. And we've got some primary electrical work under the ground near there. Any questions on the UV disinfection? Okay, and the last section of the project scope is the proposed admin building. That's basically where the parking lot is out front. This is a, this is a rendering of, of what it'll look like or drawing. And this is something of similar nature. This isn't exactly what it's going to look like, but this is similar style, what it'll look like. And unfortunately, if you guys could turn to this page, it'll be a lot easier to see. The highlighted area in yellow is the proposed lab with the appropriate sized for the, the equipment and the things that we're going to need moving forward. In the, the bottom left corner here is the SCADA or control room. Off to the right is some of the offices. We'll have office for the compliance officer, the chief plant operator and the lab manager. In the middle there is the break room. We've got men's and women's toilets, locker rooms and utility and mechanical rooms, electrical rooms. Apologize that some of this, some of this drawing is a little too fine to get, make it through on the projector. So the building, as, as I mentioned, is going to include a new laboratory, new control room, offices, break room, restrooms, locker rooms and utility, mechanic, electrical rooms. Any questions on the admin building?
Alderman Shadle?
Is this going to be connected to any of the headworks? Or is this going to be an outside walk between buildings?
It's, it's an outside walk and part of that has to do with the lab can't be integrated with that anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Monroe?
Is, are you expecting people to stay out there? Why, you know, showers and, you know, that type of thing?
Yeah, the showers and all that is, is code today. So if you have continuous access or continuous people working in there, they got to have access to the shower and locker room. At the end of the day, this building is approximately, and I keep me from speaking here, but what's the, what's the driving? What's the percentage cost of the total project on this we're looking at? Maybe, is it, is it even three, is it seven percent? It's a fairly minute amount of the total. Five percent? Okay, so the admin building is actually five percent of total cost of this project, pretty minimal. I guess, and that's kind of the, that's it for the project scope. Any other questions on that? I kind of talked to everybody and solicited your input as we went, okay?
Alderman Shadle?
Throwing a comment out with the, the showers. Having been through several of these plants, the potential is there for a worker to get pretty soiled during the course of the day. And before they climb into their car, it'd probably be nice to give them a place to take a shower.
Yes, absolutely. So I mean, aside from the potential for chemical, you know, acids and things that we use in the lab, you know, if you get out there and you get hosed, you know, if you get, you know, something breaks and you, you get covered in effluent, you're going to want a place to wash that off right away. Yes, sir.
Earlier you mentioned that the city of Freeport's the number one priority in Illinois. Can you explain like where you, where that information is coming from and more on what you mean by that?
As I understand it, we are the number one project for the EPA. This gives us access to more forgivable loan funds, but it is because of our continuous problems with combined sewer overflows. So they want to make sure that we get the money, we get whatever we need to get this problem fixed so they don't, we don't have any more of these combined sewer overflow issues. Any other questions? All right, moving into financial impact. I want to, I want to just preface this section with a little bit from the Illinois section of the American Society of Civil Engineers. These people study the, the nation every year and they provide infrastructure reports from everything, from aviation to bridges, the road conditions. They also do wastewater. So I wanted to bring an impartial perspective in on this. And it covers Illinois, but it's nothing we don't already know. Illinois gets a C minus for wastewater infrastructure. And that's out, you know, that's a A, B, C, D, F, whatever. So, so the executive summary covered it. Like I said, Illinois gets a C minus. Eighty-five percent of Illinois residents are served by 800 wastewater treatment facilities and 690 collection systems. Illinois deficiencies in wastewater infrastructure pose threats to our water quality and aquatic life and river sheds. In 2016, they estimated 6.5 billion was needed in Illinois wastewater treatment. And I don't tell you that right now, that's not enough. That, that, that's probably doubled by now. Illinois Pollution Control Board has determined most treatment facilities are approaching or reaching their design capacity and limits, requiring scrutiny of future permits. And that's one thing that I don't really want to get into with the EPA in the future is what do we do with our upcoming permits when, unless we've gone through or have a plan in place to remediate the issue? So they're looking at scrutinizing it because they know how ineffective a lot of the treatment out there is now. Aged infrastructure and new wastewater treatment plant discharge limits are posing financial challenges to all Illinois wastewater utilities. So the good news is we aren't alone. And it's just a matter of time before everybody else is dealing with the same thing we are. In fiscal year 2022, the IEP identified a project request list of 1.7 billion in projects with only 350 million available for funding. We're going to be looking at quite a bit, we're, we're a chunk of that. Federal wastewater regulations drive the most expensive capital projects for municipalities, US EPA, back to that. So the American Society of Civil Engineers recommends wastewater utilities should charge rates that reflect the true cost of service, including sunk and replacement costs. Let me back up. User rates, user rate structures must be sustainable for the utility and provide means to operate, maintain and replace the infrastructure system, including lining and CMOM requirements. So capacity management, blah, blah, blah. We're already doing the lining, folks. Increase investment on critical wastewater infrastructure improvements through the, the state revolving fund. So they're looking like the state of Illinois is going to have to. So they're looking, like, the state of Illinois is gonna have to add to that. That's just a quick thumbnail on what's going on statewide, it's not a unique problem that we have, but we are the top priority. So, right now, this project is being funded through the Illinois EPA state revolving fund loan. The facility plan was completed in 2017 and approved in 2018, originally it had five phases of the improvements. So new, especially in 2020, we got a new discharge permit that actually cranked up a few of the contaminant removal and that kind of thing, and required us to figure out what to do about these CSO events, so that caused kind of a realignment of the project. So we were originally a five-phase project, we've kind of compressed that into one, two and three, but it's, you know, it's kind of need-dependent. This facility project's been ranked first in Illinois and on the intended funding list for the past two years. EPA project scoring ranked twice priority of any other project, so we're double, so our priority is double anybody else's in the state of Illinois. Original estimates for the headworks was 27 million, that was before the inflation that we started seeing in 2020. So November 2022, a third-party estimate was put together based on eighty percent plans, it came back at $46 million. And because of that unpredictable unprecedented inflation we've all seen, it's more. So, in this particular case, FERGRAM is only looking for three percent, which is relatively low, I think standard percent on this is about 10 percent, correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, is that about right? Yeah. Okay. And industry data shows that the full replacement cost of the wastewater treatment plant would be between 275 and 300 million dollars. And full replacement cost of the entire sanitary system at 1.2 billion. Now we're getting into the bids, we received two bids, one was from IHC Construction, the other one was from William Brothers. The low bid was 53 million, 300,000. Now it was opened up on April 4th. To give you some comparisons, South Beloit recently redid their plant that serves around 8,000 people, and it cost them 34 million dollars, and that was only a flow of 3 million gallons average. 7.4 million gallons max. Well, we peak out over 16 million gallons. And then Penery Grove, I think we had an adjustment here, but they just recently bid, and their bids came back at 67 million for their wastewater treatment plant, and that was serving about 11,000 people. So what's driving some of these costs? Yes, sir.
Could you just give us a reminder again of the Freeport's comparisons to the flow rates, to the last two that you showed?
Yeah, so Freeport is about 16 million gallons per day. Darren, is that, that's not correct, is it? To answer your question? So, some of the cost escalating factors, we've seen a 15% escalation in each quarter for the last 12 quarters on materials, over a 30% increase in inflation last year on wastewater facilities. Specialized equipment like the screening units and the pumping units and the grit removers, all this stuff is seeing increases that haven't existed in the past. Also, we've got some issues with material storage and manufacturer lead times, so everything we do has super long lead times where it didn't used to have that before. The EPA has also brought up some other, added some requirements to the project that has added cost to it. The BABA certifications, you know, the made in America stuff, however great for our local manufacturers, they're far more expensive than the fasteners and pipe that was made overseas. There's also a acute shortage of skilled labor and market saturation. We've had lots of wastewater treatment projects and lots of infrastructure money out there, which is causing a lot of competition with the existing supplier, or existing contractors that could do this type of work. So that's just driven costs. Additionally, and this is a fixed cost for us, site constraints, just where it's located, the fact that it's so close to the solar panels, the fact that it is right next to the river, these are all site constraint issues. Soil conditions, back to that, that's why we have to put all those columns, all the supporting columns, is the ground is sandy, lonely soil that doesn't support what, you know, if we were into a rock shelf or something would. Groundwater pumping, so there's some additional costs related to groundwater pumping. Obviously, we're gonna have a lot of intrusion because of its proximity to the river, and also we've got very deep excavations. There's been no major investment in the wastewater plant in 40 years. The last major one was 1968 when we talked about it, we've spent money on the wastewater plant, but that was just to meet new requirements. But nothing's been done on the old stuff, and that's why we're going through here and having to redo all this. Major equipment phase one is, so most of the stuff in the plant is beyond its useful life, completely depreciated. You know, we've got some other cost escalating factors here, obviously, inflow and infiltration is a big one. So we have to design the plant for our inflow and infiltration. We get a lot of that, and we've gotta build it large enough to cover the inflow of that. So capital improvement rates, providing funds for these facilities, you know, process modifications. Phase one is ultimately, it's gonna require a phase two improvement to come afterwards. The, once we get done building phase one, we're gonna have additional generation of sludge by two to three times, and we're gonna need to build sludge handling facilities to cover that. So the EPA loan structure, so the total cost of the project, we looked at what the bids came back on, but that doesn't cover the total cost of the project, we've got design, construction, engineering, and 3% contingency, that gets us up to 59 million, 848 dollars. The EPA is currently held back 66 million dollars for the Freeport project, so the money's there. We'll be borrowing this money at a rate of 1%, and that is a hardship fee, other communities with a higher per capita income pay more. And 1% right now, when a normal bank loan's 6%, it's pretty favorable terms. But the interest on that over 30 years is still 12 million dollars. Annual repayment is gonna be 2.3 million dollars per year. And we will guaranteed receive 5 million dollars, and we'll be going back for more as soon as we can get this thing moving, that will help a little bit. So we're looking at an expected 20 dollars per connection increase on the water wastewater bill. So 20 dollars a month. Yes, sir.
Yes, Alderman Bornman?
That, that number 20 dollars says it's based on 9,800 users, is that, what's that mean?
After you take the total user accounts, you minus out the bad debt or the ones that we can't collect on, the ones that we have to chase people around for, or whatever, they don't pay regular, that's basically what we're looking at. 9,800 is, was what we're working on this.
So you're saying that the city pretty much only collects on 9,800 accounts?
No, but those are the ones we can count on for our financial calculations. To answer your question?
Sir Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Bukas?
Yes, that 9,800 number are the ones that we could count on to pay on time every month. We have 11,000 customers, but a good 10 to 12% do not pay on a regular basis.
Sure.
Any other questions on that? Oh. Sorry, any questions? So, we've kind of gone through where we've been, where we need to go, what it's gonna cost to get there, what we need to kind of investigate. What happens if we don't do something, or what if we, you know, what if we do something different? So our best estimates here is by 2026, 2027, this project will actually cost not 53 million or 59 million, but it'll be 75 million. So if we wait till 2026 or later, it's gonna be more than that. If we don't act, we will definitely, there's a good chance we'll lose 5 million dollars in forgivable loan funds, and it will make it much more difficult in the future to go back to the EPA and say, hey, we're really serious now, we wanna get this done. Phase two, as we mentioned before, is the sludge handling portion, that'll get pushed off even more, again, you're looking at project cost. Also, we'd be in violation of our NPDS permit, so the EPA would start issuing fines, the US EPA may get involved, and we've already dealt with them. There's a chance that we would be put into significant non-compliance, and the Attorney General could turn the wastewater treatment plan and the wastewater plant over to another entity. So it would include attorney's costs, additional engineering, loss of control of our upgrade process, so that's an important one there, because if you, if you look at that, the upgrade process, we're driving that. If we get folks at Springfield making the changes, they're gonna wanna do it their way, I guarantee you it won't be cheaper. Potential private utility operator takeover, so I used to work at a private utility operator, and they love communities like Freeport, because they get to come in, they buy the thing for pennies on the dollar, they go over to the ICC, they get their rates doubled, and then they do everything that EPA wants them to do anyway, except you're not only paying for that, you're paying their profit on top of it. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor up for any more questions requiring the heard action.
Alderman Bornman?
Yeah, earlier you mentioned full replacement cost would be 27 million estimate, what do you mean by full replacement, like a brand-new facility?
Full replacement, if you're going back to that slide, that was 2017 full replacement for the headworks, the stuff we're talking about right now. So that's, that's how much it's gone up since 2017. There were some design changes though.
Alderman Shale?
Where is our sewer rate, if you know, in comparison to other communities?
I had that once, I, we have a, we're scheduled to meet with the Illinois Rural Water Section to discuss rate, comparable rates in the community. So the reason I'm not going into that right now is because I need to get with them first, and then we'll follow up with a more of a financially intensive presentation on that regard. So if you'll allow me, I'd like to kick that until we get back, reconvene for more of a financial specific presentation.
Thank you.
Alderman Bornman?
I'm sorry, you kind of just talked about that, but like, next steps in this process? So you gave a very thorough presentation, and thankfully, it's like many of the new members of the council are here as well. What's, what's the next step for the council in this process?
Well, I'm gonna just say there's two, two next steps. One is, we're gonna be looking at the bid coming up, it's gonna be coming up for approval, understanding that we approve the bid, we need to be approving a overall 20 dollar increase. How that's scheduled, there's some wiggle room there, but if we, if we move forward with the bids, we're also need to move forward with the intent to do an increase on the rates of 20 dollars. However, divided up, that makes the most sense, you wanna divide it up over two or three increases, that's fine too.
Alderman Monroe?
So, what is the expected start date on the project? All things are perfectly aligned?
This fall.
In the fall.
Alderman Parker?
It's gonna, it's two to three years. Yeah. And that's actually helped, because if we're able to go ahead and move forward with the rates, that allows time to start to accumulate the funds, because what ends up happening is we need a reserve account, so when the bills start coming in, the EPA does not reimburse us the next day, in some cases, it's two months, possibly longer. So we need to have that buffer built up, so that when we go to pay the bills, the money's there and ready to go, and then we're just waiting on the EPA to reimburse us later.
Mayor Miller?
In order to keep that 5 million dollars of the forgivable loans, construction has to start this year, is that what you were saying?
We have to, we have to approve this, like, fairly soon, because the EPA is already calling, asking us, did we approve our project yet? Because they wanna portion that money somewhere else right now, Darren got a call this, today, asking what we're doing. He also called Friday. So my guess is they've got a hot project that they wanna appropriate that funds for, and they're holding off giving that away to someone else.
So, we've been the number one project for two years in a row, based on the need of the community, and not many communities get 5 million dollars in principal forgiveness. To one of Eric's questions before, the reason we're the top priority is they do a financial planning and design matrix ranking of each project, and Freeport scored almost 300 points. The next, the next community that scored was like 150 points, so we have been double everybody else, that's why we are getting offered the 5 million dollars. They're not putting pressure tactics on us, but they do have 66 million dollars reserved that needs to be committed before July, and they have a line of a lot of other communities that want this money. But since we're the number one priority, if we don't commit, the funds will be, will be unreserved, and they will move on to the next group or community, or a handful of communities to sort that out. To one other note that I heard, the reason we're being forced to bring parts of phase one, two and three together is because of the NPDS permit. If we do not meet those requirements, it is insured that Freeport will be fined, and we will get an Attorney General violation on that plant, because we have been in design of this project since 2014, the facility plan was submitted in 2017, and, and we're, you know, now pushing on 2023, and our permit renewal will be in 2025, so we have to be in a direction to meet our limits, or we will insurably have violations, that's where it's at at this point, we've delayed as long as possible on this project. And again, phase two's imminent, so the plant will likely be in construction for upwards of six to eight years to be able to complete both phases. The current bid phase is a project completion of 30 months, so we can hit a process timeline to be able to have phase two ready to go as soon as phase one's done, because we know the sludge handlings will increase 33% larger than they are today to be, to remove phosphorus. That is, that's a known, and we've actually studied the process waste stream at the plant, and we can assure you within 5% that we will have that many more solids at the plant to get rid of.
Alderman Parker?
From what you just said, then it's important that we move this forward to next month and next meeting next week?
Correct, so we've been holding bid tabs for this meeting, they're not public yet, but they will be made public tomorrow. We wanted to let the council know the information, but we legally need to post those tomorrow. EPA did call me Friday and today, and they want to know the council's flavor for moving forward or not, because they have a lot of other communities requesting this money. But you should know that if we do delay this project, and I know it's poor timing, we will lose the 5 million dollars that we have on reserve, and there's no guarantee that we will get it next year. Freeport's been very, very fortunate with the Illinois EPA, and we have probably received in the last two years somewhere around 25 million dollars worth of forgiveness, which actually accounts to about 7 dollars in user rate per month that we've been able to save, and this is another significant amount that most communities are not getting. Regardless whether we push the project or keep the project, this project's not gonna go away, there, there is no value engineering to these permit requirements. We have done a minimalistic design that was sustainable, so these projects, these buildings that we're designing are a 50-plus-year structure. that we're, we're designing are a 50-plus-year structure. You have to commend the operators at our plant currently and the maintenance people. Everything down there is 40, 50 years old, and they've been stretching it to its last legs. The screening unit currently has no available parts for replacement or maintenance, so when it's down, it's down permanently, and we're not screening our flows anymore. And that's just one piece of equipment.
Alderman Parker?
I got a tour of the building here last year, and I'll tell you what, I don't think we have an option, I'll make a motion to move it forward to next, next Monday's council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Parker to move it on to the next council meeting, seconded by Alderman Monroe. Madam Clerk, could you take your role?
Voice is fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, just voice, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay, so we have six, six ayes and one no.
So one other comment I'd like to make quickly, I dropped off summary packets for the new council members and the current council members. They were not, every slide that was in the presentation, they were a summary to try to cut down on the information. We did it because we know it's a lot for you to absorb all at once. If anybody, including the new Alderman, would like to send questions to Rob or myself, we'll be glad to try to answer them for you and get them back to you in a timely fashion. We appreciate your, your time. I know it's a lot of information to, to digest all at once, but again, this, this project's been in motion since 2014, it's, it's just that it, you know, we're at the last pass of refusal here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick note, at the very end of your packet, there's a final summary, so it's just your quick crib notes and cheat sheet on all the stuff that was in the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Director Boyer. Okay, excuse me, moving on, item 14, public comments, agenda or non-agenda items, limit to three minutes per person. Ma'am, we start with, we have, that's okay, we have a couple email comments first, is that okay? Okay.
The first one received today was from Shane Orlo. In regards to the hiring of our next city manager, as a citizen, I am very concerned with the lack of communication and the expediated pace that progress has been made with the hiring of our next city manager. I was hoping the city would involve the citizens and their voices in the process of hiring the next person to essentially run our city. However, we only got notice of a meet and greet that is happening in two days. The process has happened without community involvement. How did the city come to these two candidates? How did the city get voices from the community to make decisions on these candidates? The backgrounds of these candidates should also be reviewed by the public, and the city should be communicating this information openly. The appointment of our next city manager should not be taken lightly. The people of Freeport spoke in the last election and voted for a change in leadership in our city council. The appointment of the next city manager should come after they take seats in our town hall. The people have spoken, please do not rush this process, let the people decide their future. Shane Orlo, Concerned Citizen. The second email was received at 401. My name is Lori Myers, I'm a lifelong resident of Freeport. The current city council should not be making a final decision on who will be hired as city manager. We just had an election and the voters have spoken. The newly-elected council members should be involved in this decision-making process. Rushing this process with the current council is not being respectful of the will of Freeport voters. Thank you, Lori Myers.
Okay, thank you. Public comments?
My name is Diane Yokum, and I'm also a resident of the municipality here in Freeport. So democracy works when fairness and just representation are present in decisions made. We just held the municipal election where fair elections assured just representation on the Freeport City Council, something this city council has not had in a very long time. Yet, I'm not convinced that fairness and justice are being enacted with the rushed process of selecting a new city manager. Just last Monday, this council was called together in executive session, which included, is my guess, the selection committee for the new manager. I've read over recent months of council minutes, and I don't find much transparent information about when the process began, how it was enacted, or who the people would be on the selecting committee for this new city manager. And now, suddenly, it seems we have two finalist candidates for community meet and greet this coming Wednesday night. One is Blaine Wing, who lost the selection for Beloit's city manager, and the other is none other than our local Rob Boyer, who is the president, deputy city manager, and public works director. Our last city manager was chosen from within the ranks of the employees this last time. So on my mind, and on the minds of many of the other community members, is, is this truly a fair and just process, or a process which was already predetermined as to its outcome, with a potential sham of having another choice? And on top of that, you all, who are only of one party here, and not particularly diverse in terms of fair representation for the city of Freeport, may get to choose who this person will be at the city council meeting on April 24th, when only three of you will remain to work under this new city manager. In true democratic, fair, and just representation, for choosing the new city manager, it would be far better and more trustworthy to wait until the newly-elected city council members are sworn in and seated in May to make that choice. They are the ones who will be working with this new manager, too. I ask you to slow down, wait until May, and allow them that earned privilege. Otherwise, you may be under cloud of suspicion in the minds of many in Freeport. Give fairness, justice, and democracy its rightful place, please.
Thank you. Any other comments? Tommy?
I wanted to graduate math summer, hope, good luck, and, good luck, and you do a good job with police chief in Freeport. And well, Jingle Booger, I give for getting thrown in to be the second chief.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other public comments?
My name is Wendy Pearson, I reside at 1323 South Chicago, here in Freeport, Illinois. In regards to the city manager's position, there are a number of people for the past, well, I would say, two to three elections prior to the city manager being elected officially in this town that did not want a city manager. Each city manager that we've received have not stayed, and one was brought by the one previous that didn't stay. This is our community, these are our tax dollars, our money is paying your salary, but at the same time, we're not giving them the opportunity to determine who will control, run, rule, and organize our lives, our children's lives, and this entire community. It is unjust that if the democratic process isn't served and serviced in this town, she said might be. I'm going to say that there will be scrutiny on all of you, and you will have to deal with your own conscience later on. For 20 years, I've stood before this city council and said these words, be careful how you treat our elderly, how you treat our citizens, how you treat our children. Be careful.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Marcus Signer, and I would like the community to, to look over who's going out for things. Like, for example, you can see my shirt, he was charged with a crime that no one would ever know about. If that happened in Freeport, you would have never heard about it, not one thing. But, you know, since we got information, we were able to go on the computer and see this, when he got charged with hitting someone a battery, you know, later it got dropped, but we're tired of people being friends on the board, or you know him, or we're going to put him in, like, like, for, for example, I see for new chief sheriff, when I feel when the one leaves, Nick Potenak will be next, because that's his friend, that's how it is in this community. We don't know who to turn to. I, the closest person, this nice lady's been helping me get through it with, with, as far as being down emotional in this community, facing charges. Summers, he has talked to me, he's been pointing me in the right direction. I really do appreciate what he's done for our community, you know, everything he can't stop. He gets some people off the streets, you know, who lets him out with probation for violent crimes. We see that all the time in Stevens County. You'll have the lowest, you'll, you'll have a car, you'll get arrested for having a felony with driving a car. You'll go to prison for 18 months, but people get caught with pistols, and they'll be, be out three years probation, two and a half years probation. When people got kids in the union, you know, and, and just because a prosecutor or something don't like you, they're coming after you. I text Jody Miller, she, she responded to me several, a few times, but once when it came with, like, one of them, the board, or, I can't, I have things going on, I, there's prosecutors, you know, that have family members in here on the board, so I already been coming after them most time, like, you can get for doing things, you know? So, I mean, you know, I've been through it, I've been trying to talk to Jody Miller. Once, when other people got involved that she's, she knows and took pictures with, there's nothing to be heard of. I have a cousin who was at Royal Pub, we did a police report, 16-year-old drinking liquor. Police report, police said, what would happen if she would leave here and get in a car accident? Well, nothing would be done, because from what we hear, Johnny used to be the owner, was the police officer, his son's on the force. Nothing will be done. From, I text you, you told me you can't control certain things, I'm not saying it's true, but I'm asking you, too, do you control, like, the liquor stuff down here? Because that's, that's from what I'm hearing, you're in control of certain things with liquor, I don't know exactly, but you have say-so with certain things. There, there is people on the force threatening people, saying they're going to kill them, stuff like that, nothing, nothing gets talked about. Then people go through mental things, and then people hold four-fives about putting it in their throat, you know? But there's no one to talk to, you know? And no, I don't feel suicidal, but who do you talk to? We're supposed to come to you, Jody. Summers could do what he, only could do what he could do, you know, I feel he was, it was set up for everything to be put on him, like the violence is going up, it's not him.
Thank you, your time is up.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Item number 15, executive session.
Still both. Randy? Still both. First one will be pursuant to five ILCS 122C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Secondly, pursuant to five ILCS 122C2, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules of one or more classes of employees.
Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Mysick. All in favor?
May I take roll call on this one?
Roll call, apologies.
Barr?
Aye.
Borneman?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Mysick?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
It's going to be a long one, you think?
I think it is. I hope you're in need of it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.